And can I ask for the approval of minutes for the May 6th meeting, or the committee of the whole meeting? Moved by councillor Henma, seconded by councillor Henry. Thank you. And we have no delegations. Oh, call a vote. Oh, yes, we should probably vote on that. Vote! Shall we approve? Okay, they are approved. Thank you. We're getting there. We have no delegations tonight, no presentations listed, and no consent motions. So we are zipping right through to item number six on the agenda. And this is a staff report on the demolition of residential buildings 192 to 218 Urb Street West. And we've got the report here, prepared by Dominic Simpson, who is sitting down here. Move the recommendation? Or, oh, yes, well, if, any questions for Mr Simpson? Please, bring them forward.
Yeah, through Chair Bonagor. It's with regard to property standards. You make reference at the end of the item that seating, sodding, mulching would be required, and vegetation to the satisfaction of the city. But I'd also like to make sure that there's some clarity in here with regard to maintaining property standards and mowing that seating and mulching. And also with regard to lighting, if there's, I'm going to say, dark corners where we could have tents pitched and various and sundry other occupants of the land. So I don't know whether that needs a change in the motion or not, but I want to make sure that that's very clear to the applicant because I don't think it's tolerable to have grass that is out of control there. It's going to affect sightlines for drivers and not to mention how unsightly that will be. And I don't want to deal with bylaw, having to go through 25 bylaw infractions and a trip to the legal courts. So I'd rather it be part of this.
Yes, I don't think, oh, sorry.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sorry?
It's inviting you to respond.
Yeah. Through you, Chair Bonagor. I don't feel it needs to be, anything needs to be changed with the motion. Standard process with demolition permits is that we can add conditions to it, so it's definitely something we can consider. I would want to consult with municipal enforcement as well to see what their process would be, to see if they would want any additional measures added.
As a follow-up, and I'm looking over to Mr Ormsen and Mr Dykstra, I'd really like this set up so that we don't have to deal with bylaw issues, and if it's not mowed, we mow it and we, and we ticket them. Like, we send them the bill. Like, I just, I can just envision, because we've seen this happen elsewhere, and this is too prominent of a location.
Through you, Chair Bonagor. And yes, councillor Freeman, we understand your concerns about SEP TED and safety and sightliness and things like that. So we can certainly work with the applicant to ensure that we have the proper, excuse me, appropriate conditions on the demolition permit, and we will monitor as well.
And that will not require a change to the motion, I believe? No? Okay. Any other questions on the report for staff? Councillor Bodley.
Through you, Chair Bonagor. In the, in the report, it says that this should not be construed as us supporting or not supporting a decision based on the informal from last week, so I want to make that clear. But I guess I may be looking at this from the other side of the coin. Is the developer aware that if they, formal public meeting or decision ultimately does not go their way, are they aware of the, of the pretty substantial fine that they're looking at here for not having site plan approved within the certain date? Are they aware of that?
Through you, Chair Bonagor. Yes, the applicant is aware of that. I sent them the staff report well in advance of tonight's meeting, and didn't receive any issues or concerns from them. Yeah.
Any further questions? Okay. So the mayor is moving. Do I have a second? Okay, councillor Henma, and call the vote. In favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we're at item 6B, which is, oh, thank you, Dominic, by the way. Thank you. 6B, which is the heritage permit application 1907 for number 39 Central Street. And this report was prepared by Frederick Van Royen, who's coming up now. And while you get settled, I'll just ask councillor. Move the motion before us. Okay. Got councillor Freeman, seconded by councillor Bodley. I shall call the vote. Everyone in favor? That is everyone. Okay, thank you. We're getting there. Next is item 6C, which is again, it's all uptown tonight, sorry, everyone, from other wards. This is the listing of non-designated properties on the Municipal Heritage Register in the Mary Allen neighborhood area. And this report, again, is Frederick Van Royen, who is again here to answer any questions of council. So are there any questions from council on this matter? Yeah, councillor Freeman?
The only question was, is any of the property owners contrary-minded to this listing?
Through you, Chair Bonagor.
Right in the center of the Northdale neighborhood. Social Northdale 6. These, as you're aware, the new zoning bylaw is still under appeal with the local planning appeal tribunal. So the applicant is, well, we're reviewing the application based on both zoning bylaws, and the more restrictive of the two zoning bylaws in terms of the regulations would take precedent. Generally, the regulations between the two are pretty much the same, vary between setbacks in some instances, or the amenity space. And just for a high level, because I know the applicant will be presenting right after, in terms of development proposal, it's a six-story residential apartment building. The proposed density is 573 bedrooms per hectare, which will result in 190 units and 225 bedrooms. The applicant is also proposing 84 parking spaces underground. The applicant is also proposing a number of mezzanines in the one-bedroom, in one-bedroom units on the ground floor, so this would incorporate loft space for these bedrooms. And again, the applicant can talk to this in a bit more detail if you have any questions regarding that. And also, just a brief look at some of the renderings for the building. The one at the top, you can see it's a west elevation, which will be fronting onto Albert Street, north elevation there at the left corner, facing Hickory Street, and then a south elevation. The actual amendments that the applicant is, from 50 bedrooms per hectare to 573 bedrooms per hectare, which is within the official plan maximum of 600 bedrooms per hectare. They're also proposing side yard reduction in the south portion of the site. They're proposing an architectural projection in the rear of the building, which would incorporate balconies. And they're proposing to increase the number of driveways on the lot from one to two. But I also want to note, make a note that all of these amendments are subject to change as per staff's review and when we circulate the application, as well as changes that might come through the site plan process. Next, they're also proposing to put the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors of the building into the daylight triangle at the corner of Albert and Hickory. Generally, these daylight triangles are setbacks that are established in the zoning bylaw so that there's appropriate sightlines at the intersection. So the first and third floors will still be within that daylight triangle. And then lastly, which is something just common of a lot of the Northdale neighborhood, is the, to lift the holding symbol. And to do that, the applicant wants to satisfy or demonstrate that there's sufficient servicing capacity and transportation capacity on site, whether the development conforms with the city's official plan and regional official plan, as well as the urban design manual and our Northdale Urban Design Guidelines. And lastly, complete a section 7, 37, bonusing agreement. Now, as somebody might be aware, last week, which would have implications to the city's bonusing framework, so staff will be reviewing that and its implications to the applicant's proposal moving forward and taking the best direction with that. Next, just with the submitted documents and studies with the application, I don't need to go into this into detail, it's, majority of it's a standard package, servicing report, noise study, urban design rationale, site plan, transportation impact studies, et cetera. And lastly, for next steps, staff will be reviewing all of this content, all the submitted documents, the requested amendments, and the proposal as a whole, such as the building heights, the parking, et cetera. We also welcome any feedback from the public during this process, and we are currently circulating the, the application with internal and external agencies during the month of June. And lastly, we would be taking all of this consideration and coming back to council at a formal public meeting at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, does any of, any councillor have questions for staff? Just please remember, this is an informal public meeting, and only questions of clarification are to be asked. Yes, councillor Henry?
Thank you, Chair Bonagor, and thank you, Dominic, for, for presenting tonight. Couple of questions, and then I'll have a few for the, for the applicant. First, on Bill 108, as, as noted, if the clock expires, and I understand from, from my own reading that the date that the act is proclaimed is the date that we would need to have any section 37 agreements signed and approved for them to remain in effect. What would be necessary for an application at this scale of, at this level of density? What would be required for it to still be considered by the city if section 37 was not available?
I think we've got Joel in the back looking to answer this. Thank you.
Through you, Chair Bonagor. Essentially, if the amendments to Bill, through Bill 108 to section 37, prevent the city from seeking bonusing through the, the current framework that's under the Planning Act, the mechanism to add additional density would be through an official plan amendment in conjunction with this zone change application. So the amendment would have to be, or the existing application would have to be amended to include an official plan amendment to propose the additional density.
I think that's helpful context, just as we begin this process. So on the specific development itself, Dominic or others, I'm wondering how common a building overhang into the daylight triangle is in the city of Waterloo. Is this a common request? Is this a highly unusual request?
Through you, Chair Bonagor. There, it's, it's a request, and we'll evaluate what the results of that will be, and we'll consider other examples that may exist in the city. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but I'm sure it's not the first time this has been requested, but we'll do a full evaluation as we move forward.
It just sort of struck me as an unusual piece I hadn't seen before, so I was curious about that. I note as well in the, in the list, that you've got that they're asking for two driveways rather than one. My glance at the site plan would suggest that the two driveways are really appear to be a double-wide driveway rather than two distinct, you know, driveways in terms of how they're impacting the, the street. So I trust that that's something that staff are looking, are looking into as far as the request inappropriateness on our Green Street. And I'll, I'll leave it there, because I think the other ones are best answered by the applicant.
Do we have, oh, yes, Mayor Wolfsky.
Continuing on councillor Henry's questioning on density through the chair, on the, if you'll back in your slides and just refresh my memory of what's the increased density that they're asking for, I think it was on your earliest slides. So, yeah, how many, how many units are?
So, the proposed density is 573 bedrooms per hectare, and that would be 225 beds.
Okay, so it's, so 25, 65 additional beds, units? Or, where I'm going with this is that, I think in the last time we did density bonusing, it was $10,000 per unit was sort of the going rate, I think, we established. So I'm just wondering, what is the, what sort of the, the quantum of density bonusing that would probably be required here? Any, any quick math out there?
So, are we, just to clarify, we're trying to find out how many essentially additional bedrooms?
How many additional? I'm trying to remember what our density bonusing was before.
Building, given their close proximity, and they're both going through the same process at the same time, is there anything we should consider there?
Through you, Chair Bonagor. To my knowledge, there's nothing standing out right now that should be a concern. Both of those buildings are kind of have, are working with grades similarly, they have similar heights, but no issues that are jumping out of my idea. Mayor John, if you have anything to add?
Through you, Chair. The same response, it's a separate application, separate site consideration, but details such as topography changes across the site will be two factors that are similar between these developments, but we handle differently. Mezzanines and how those work are similar proposed, but different at the same time. And so there's certain similarities, but also a lot of differences between these two properties that I think there's still standalone discussions.
Rest of council, any questions? I have one. It may not fall under your auspices at all, gentlemen, but given the amount of density in that neighborhood and on that street that's proposed in particular, can I get some insight into any thinking in terms of traffic management or changes to the road structures that might be implemented to deal with this increased density?
Definitely. Through you, Chair Bonagor. As part of the application, a transportation impact study is submitted that analyzes the proposed development and its density, as well as the surrounding density, and taking that into consideration. And through that, I haven't reviewed it in great detail yet, but it would recommend any interventions that would be necessary, such as a signalized intersection or something of that nature.
And that would factor in all of the, all the developments and planned developments that we know at this date? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and councillor Vasek, coming in at the end.
Through you, councillor Bonagor. Your question made me think of a question, that's why. Yeah, so in terms of increased density, I've probably asked this question, and I'm not totally retaining it, but in that area, do we rely on applicants to tell us what the market demands, or do, does the city have its own research about how many units and bedrooms are needed in the Northdale area through previous studies? Like, how do we know as a city how many bedrooms and how many units are needed in particular areas? So in this one in particular, in the student area?
To my knowledge, and maybe someone else can answer this better, but I don't think the city has any sort of projections for this particular area, and it's all at the discretion of the applicant, the density they want to propose, if it's within our requirements, of course.
Mr Kotta?
Through you, Chair Bonagor. Just to expand on what Dominic indicated, the proposed additional density that the applicant is requesting through bonusing is at the discretion of council. Council is to determine whether they want to grant that particular development. It's not common for staff to get into a review of whether there's so many one bedrooms or two bedrooms, or three bedroom units within such developments, but if that is a request of council, we can certainly have a review of that through this application.
Anything you'd like to follow up with there, councillor Vasek, or you?
I don't think I'm asking for that right now about this particular one, but in general, I am curious, like, how as a council will we make decisions about what densities are needed when we're being told that market research is driving demand, but we as a city don't necessarily know that data, but we're relying on applicants who are looking at their bottom lines for making those decisions? So I'm just feeling personally a bit of a tension there with data that I have from who it is and from who it isn't. So that's just not related particularly to this application, but it has come up from this in previous meetings, so that's why I bring it up now. Unless this is the appropriate time to ask for it, but I'm just not sure, because I don't know how to ask for most things in council yet.
Is this a situation where we might separately ask for a staff report to come at a later date? Yes?
Through you, Chair Bonagor. Certainly, we can provide some information around the, the data that we do have. What we can say is, is that, one of the reasons the Northdale study was undertaken was to transition away from five-bedroom purpose-built student units to allow for a flexibility in the marketplace, which is the way the zoning is set up. You can equally build five-bedroom units here, or three-bedroom units, or one-bedroom units, and it's left to the market to decide which the, which is generally in demand, and the configuration of those particular units. But in our experience, there is a stronger demand right now for one- and two-bedroom units in this particular area of the city, which is why you're seeing most of the proposed buildings coming forward with one, or in some cases, two-bedroom product being advanced. But we can provide some further information on that, that we have readily available within the planning through the council.
That would be appreciated. Thank you very much. If there are no further questions of staff, thank you, Dominic and John. I will now ask registered delegations to come forward, and we have one delegation, and that's Rebecca.
Perfect, thank you. As you've already heard, the property is an assembly of six units, 262 to 280 Albert Street, consisting of single-detached residential units. This is a shot of the site in a bit of a larger context of the area. You can see the site's proximity to the University of Waterloo, to the ION stations. So as you've heard, and I'll try and cut down on the duplication, the application is for a six-story residential building. It's a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, for a total of 190 units or 225 bedrooms. The application is proposing to provide. On the frontage, excuse me, and there are mezzanine units, both on the Albert Street frontage and on the rear side of the site on the ground floor. The purpose of the mezzanine units for residential uses is to essentially provide a loft-style aesthetic or feeling. And for the mezzanines on the Albert Street frontage as well, the idea is to provide flexibility for future conversion to non-residential uses, so retail, commercial, et cetera. As you can see from the site plan, vehicular access is proposed to be off of Hickory Street. All car and bicycle parking is proposed to be underground. An amenity for the building is provided through two shared spaces on the ground floor and then individual unit balconies. So generally, with the proposal, you're seeing kind of a more urbanized site. You're seeing the consolidation of six driveways into one access point to the site, and a building that is coming up to the street edge and creating a more urban condition and a more improved pedestrian realm. The site is also within a major transit station area. It's within 800 meters of two ION stations, the U Waterloo ION and the Lorré Waterloo Park ION stations. So it's also providing transit-supportive density and assisting with the MTSA density We are essentially looking for three main zoning bylaw amendment requests. The first one is to increase the permitted density to 235 bedrooms for the site. We are also looking to reduce the side yard to 3.3 meters, and we only need this under bylaw 1108. It does meet the new standard under bylaw 2018 050. We're also looking to remove the hold from the site. So those are the three main ones that we're looking to do, and we are currently having discussion and working with staff to address the driveway and some architectural projections. So in support of the application, and in particular, the removal of the hold, a functional surveying reporting, a stormwater management report, a traffic impact study, and a noise impact study were submitted, and they all generally conclude that acceptable development standards can be achieved for the site. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I will look to council. Councillor Henry?
Thank you, Chair Bonagor, and thank you, Rebecca, for, for being available today. Certainly, you heard my earlier questions, and I heard them noted in your presentation, so I appreciate that. Following on to the, you know, Bill 108 challenge, where Doug Ford wants to create more development faster by creating less development and making it slower, which is an interesting proposal, how necessary to your, to your clients is the, is the density bonusing to the viability of their, of their project?
Well, I think we're working within a particular structure and framework as per the official plan. That is what the application was made under, and this is a fairly recent development, so I think this is something that we are continuing to have discussions with staff on.
Yeah, certainly, heading an OPE route would be unprecedented in the neighborhood, and would be a challenge for, for us to get our heads around, given where the plan was coming from. So it does sound like time is of the essence to, to figure these things out in a, in a quick way. The one question I had for you, beyond what I've already raised in terms of, in terms of the massing of, of the building that, that you've proposed, it's hard for me to tell based on the, the concept elevations and the rest, but is there any sort of articulation, you know, away from the property line along the very long Albert Street facade?
There is some articulation, and there is also some articulation through design materials, so material and color, but certainly, you know, we're fairly early in the process, so there's definitely the opportunity for more urban design discussion.
Yeah, I think that would be, you know, valuable, I think, without providing any specific comment at this time. I know that it is a very long facade, and the ability to break that up in a, in a way that's, you know, beyond just, you know, material would probably be beneficial to the, to the pedestrian realm. I know there are a couple of examples in the neighborhood which have longer facades and have managed to jog some of that in a way that creates some more interest. And I think should, should there be an interest, and as staff has proceeded, I'd be happy to have conversations further, too. If density bonusing is an appropriate vehicle and an available vehicle, what would be appropriate to consider? Because my guess is the time to get an agreement done on those is short, if, if everybody proceeds in a way that can allow that to happen, and that should allow that to happen. in a way that can allow that to happen and that should allow that to happen.
Any other questions for the delegation from council? No? Okay, thank you very much for coming in. If there are, now I'd like to ask the people in the gallery, is there anyone else present here tonight who wishes to speak to this application or to this presentation? No takers? Okay. It's not, we're not scary, feel free to come up. Okay, so if there are no more delegations, this informal public meeting is now concluded. Staff will review the issues and provide further reports to council at a later date. Now we, can someone please get Councilor Freeman? Thank you. So now we're moving on to item 7B. This is a formal public meeting to consider item 7B. This is the Official Plan Amendment Number 20 and Zoning Change Application Z1804 for Club Willow Wells at 40 Blue Springs Drive. Any persons who want further notice of this application, including the passing of any bylaws, should sign the appropriate register in the binder located at that desk at the rear of the council chambers. Again, there's more than one binder this evening, so please ensure that you are signing the appropriate one. And will the clerk now please advise council of the method used to give notice of the meeting and the dates that notice was given?
Notice is advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on May 23, 2019, and mailed or emailed on May 21, 2019, to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property, to public agencies, to all persons who signed in or spoke at the informal public meeting held on March 26, 2018, and to all persons who requested further notice.
Great, thank you. And now our planner, John Voss, will give a brief overview of the application. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the committee, staff and the public. As noted, this is the formal public meeting to discuss the Official Plan Amendment and Zone Change Application for Club Willow Wells at 40 Blue Springs Drive. The subject lands are specifically the Club Willow Wells Recreation Facility, which includes the indoor pool and outdoor tennis courts on Blue Springs Drive. The remainder of the property is outlined with the dotted red line on your screen, including the ponds and boardwalks are not subject to this application. The proposed development is for a 15-story residential development with a six-story podium and nine-story tower in the southwest portion of the site. The building will contain a maximum of 182 units or 298 bedrooms. A total of 195 parking spaces will be required at a rate of 1.07 spaces per unit. To permit the proposed development, the official plan will be changed from open space, being parks and other green space, and low-density 10 meters, to mixed-use high-density residential and a high-density 81-meter permission. The zoning will also change to allow the development to proceed. Zoning bylaw 1418 will change from green zone to multiple residential 25 with site-specific provisions. Zoning bylaw 2018-050 was approved in September of 2018, but as you know, it's not quite in effect yet while it's under appeal to the local planning appeals tribunal. The zoning will be changed from active zone change to residential mixed-use 60, again with site-specific provisions. This will become the final zoning on the lands when the appeals are resolved and bylaw 1418 is repealed. As mentioned, there are a number of site-specific regulations which will ensure the future building has similar setbacks and massing to the current concept. This includes tower setbacks, which will ensure the towers located in the southwest corner of the property away from existing residential buildings. You can see a variety of other site-specific amendments on the screen. Staff have reviewed the history of the site, the neighborhood context, planning policy framework, the proposed development and specific restrictions, and the overall land use compatibility for supporting an apartment building in this location. As such, staff recommend the Official Plan Amendment 20 and Zone Change Application Z1804 be approved as outlined in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions the committee might have.
And now I look to council. Any questions for Mr. Voss? Councilor Bodley.
I guess this, through you, Chair Bonagor. Maybe this is another stupid new counselor-type question, but by designating it RMU 60 with a site-specific provision that suggests that it must be quite a bit lower than that, does that set a precedent then for that area of the land where in the future developer might come in and say, "This is already RMU 60, so the rest of it should be RMU 60," as opposed to designating it as RMU 40 with site-specific provision that says they can go up to 52 meters? Just comments on that, I guess.
Through you, Chair. This is an interesting idea. When we look at the zoning under 2018, it's hard to see on the screen here, but these other properties, they're RMU 40, which represents the height of those buildings roughly around, I think it's six stories, roughly is the taller ones. And when we look at the RMU zone, there's certain categories of heights and certain regulations for each of those categories. So the 40 will permit things that are shorter than 40. And so when we do zoning, what's easier, it seems to work better with the other regulations that are within the 40 zone versus the 60 zone, to apply the regulations under RMU 60 and then break down the height relating to density and separations and height requirements. The RMU 40 has different podium requirements and tower requirements, whereas the R60 has much more appropriate ones.
So through you, Chair Bonagor, you're basically saying that if we were to change it from to RMU 40, there would be a lot more than just the height that would need to change, given what's there, is that?
That'd be correct. And for a future developer to then make those changes is another whole process for them to do so, so it's unlikely that that would happen.
Right, so from your perspective, designate this as RMU 60 with the site-specific provisions does not set a precedent in your, from your perspective?
Through you, Counselor, Chair, yeah, Counselor Bonagor. I would say, no, it doesn't set a precedent because council's decision tonight, if they support the application, is saying the precedent is 52. That is the permitted height requirement that council is permitting. To increase that or change that would have to go through a full review and discussion as to why anything different would be appropriate and the appropriate approvals accordingly.
Any other questions from council? Yes, Councilor Henma.
Thank you, Chair Bonagor, through you. Just a question regarding comments and concerns, as we were not part of the informal meeting, and just curious if all of the issues that were raised during that process have been addressed, and if there are any that are really outstanding that we should be aware of.
Through you, Counselor. I believe the applicant will discuss that and a lot of the iterations of the plans as they've changed over the years. It'll be really interesting, I think, to see how it's changed and how they got to this final design, so I'll leave that for the applicant to discuss.
I'll hold the question. Thanks.
If there are no further questions from council, I'll, thank you, Mr. Voss, for bringing that presentation. We have one registered delegation, and that is Chris Pidgen from GSP Group, so I invite you to the podium.
Thank you, Chair, and members of council. I'm Chris Pidgen with GSP Group. I'm the planning consultant to Club Willow Wells, and there are 324 owners. I've never really worked for an ownership group quite that large before. A number of the Board of Directors and owners are here this evening. Maybe just by a show of hands, who's from Willow Wells community? And they all would like to speak tonight. No, I'm kidding. That's right. So maybe just to give you a brief bit of history, council. So the Willow Wells community is comprised of six condominiums, the Waterford, Cloisters 1, 2, and 3, the Willowbrook, and the atrium. So there's a total of 324 units or 324 owners who are responsible for the maintenance of the ponds, the open space, and the rec complex known as Club Willow Wells, which is actually a part of the open space ponds and boardwalks and the outdoor amenity areas. So Club Willow Wells was not being used extensively by the owners, and it was in need of some significant repairs. And as a result, the community came together and were looking for alternatives, and that included a way of lowering their common element condominium fees that they all contribute to, to maintain the ponds, the open space, and the biggest cost, of course, being that recreational complex. So those six condominiums looked at five options of what to do with Club Willow Wells, and the majority of the 324 owners voted in favor of the pursuit of redevelopment of the Club Willow Wells recreational facility. So in essence, these owners are putting in place, are readying the site for prospective developers, and what they wanted to do was to manage or control the amount of development that could take place on that block so that it would fit into the overall Willow Wells community. And the way to do that, of course, is that they progressively led the Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment process that's before committee this evening. And there will be a future severance, so to sever this site from the open space and the pond block. So the development concepts that were considered by the owners, they evaluated three preliminary design schemes with various heights and configurations. And what they wanted to do was really manage the height and the massing of the buildings that would fit into the character of the Willow Wells community so that they wouldn't negatively be impacted. They didn't want to simply sell the block and let a developer come forward with their vision. They wanted to manage that through this OPA-ZBA process. So the first scheme was a slab building design, and you can see, especially in the right-hand schematic, those slab buildings simply overwhelmed the Willow Wells community. The second scheme was more of a point tower design, so two point towers, and again, you can see in the schematic, just the overall scale of those buildings overwhelmed the community. So the third scheme that they considered was more in keeping, a better scale, but the tower configuration would have cast shadows over the Cloisters condominiums which are located to the east, and that was not acceptable to the ownership group. So the preferred development concept is a single tower, and as Mr. Voss pointed out, that would be located in the southwest, so the furthest distance away from the existing condominiums, and we would then impose building limits and setbacks. The informal public meeting was held last year, it was in March 2018, and the concept that was presented at the time was a 15-story tower with a five-story podium, so that L-shaped portion of the building is the podium. We showed this graphic, which proposed accesses using or sharing, if you will, the Waterford condominium driveway, which is immediately to the west, and that gave some residents some concerns about the sharing of that access. So as a result, Counselor Freeman suggested that we hold an additional neighborhood information meeting. That was held on August 15, 2018. Counselor Freeman and Mr. Voss attended, and at that meeting, we provided clarification to all of the owners who attended of the 324 owners, clarification on that shared driveway that in fact we could separate it, and we provided them with two options, so a 15-story development option and a 13-story development option. That information exchange then went to the Board of Directors, and on September 6, they agreed, all six condominiums agreed to select option number one, that is before you this evening. So this is the preferred development concept, it's that L-shaped building, an L-shaped podium, 15 stories overall with a six-story podium, 182 units, and as Mr. Voss indicated, 196 or 95 parking spaces. And of course, we addressed the shared driveway. It has a standalone driveway on this development block. So a number of site-specific zoning provisions in place, and I agree with Mr. Voss's commentary about a developer coming forward and trying to do something that would be outside of these three-dimensional setbacks that we've set in place. He would have 324 owners scrutinizing any revisions that he or she would like to make to this development concept. So you can see the rationale again was really to put in place the massing of the building through setbacks and building heights and step backs in the building to ensure that there are no shadows that would be cast on any of the six condominium developments. So just some conceptual design options, so a view from Blue Springs Drive. This is a view looking across from the Cloisters, across the pond, to the rear portion of the building. And then another view of Blue Springs Drive, looking to the west, towards King Street. So we have reviewed the staff report, and it was very thorough, comprehensive, and addressed all of our concerns, and we respectfully request the committee and council approve Fish Plan Amendment Number 20 and the Zone Change Application Z1804 as set out in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for leading us through that. It sounds like it's been quite a fascinating process for all involved. I'd like to see, look to council now, if you've got questions of the delegate. Councilor Henma.
Thank you, through you. Probably more just a comment, thank you very much for the presentation, and you did answer my question that I had of staff, that it appears that all of the issues that were raised by the residents at the time have been addressed in the new proposed site plan, so thank you very much for that.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from council? No, it doesn't appear to be, so I'd like to thank you very much for coming and presenting to us tonight.
Thank you.
We don't have any other delegations registered, but I'd like to invite anyone who is here, if you would like to speak on this matter, you are more than welcome to do so. This is the people's room, so it's, and it's not too scary, just if you would like to speak, I invite you to just come up, state your name and your municipality and what you'd like to let us know. Yes, please come up. If anyone else is interested in speaking, if you'd like to also maybe form a small queue or something, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Jerry McKenzie, regarding 30 Blue Springs. I was unfortunately away during the last meeting, and I just wanted to hear what the rationale was between choosing a 15-story building versus a 10 to 13-story building, please. Is somebody able to answer that question for me? Because I would think that most of the residents would be more in favor of a 10-story building rather than a 15-story building so that it wouldn't overwhelm the neighborhood.
It looks to have been a decision of the board, at the condo board, but can I look to staff or anyone?
I would just wonder why, what the rationale was behind that. Thank you.
Counselor Freeman?
Just because it's difficult for delegates to ask questions from the podium, maybe we can ask, I'll ask the question of Mr. Pidgen if you can outline that, please.
Sure, so through the chair, so the, as I said, there were two options that were put forward in August of last year. The Board of Directors, comprised of members of each of the six condominium boards, voted on their preferred on September 6. So there was some So there was some passage of time from August the fifteenth until September the sixth so that each of the condominium boards could discuss amongst the overall membership or the members within each of their condominium. And then they brought that back, and there was a vote that took place on September the sixth. And the preferred option was the fifteen-story building. Overall, that's not to say that there may have been some residents who, who had another preference, but overall, the boards voted in favor of the fifteen-story option.
Can you give us any insight into any, any reasoning they gave you behind that, just to help clarify for the, for the delegate?
Sure. So the rationale was that they felt that a fifteen-story building with the tower focused in the southwest did no, did not overwhelm or was not out of step with the character of the Willow Wells community overall. So there are, there are two building, buildings that are nine stories in the existing community. They're set at slightly different elevations than the rec complex. They're set back some distance away. It was just felt that the fifteen-story met the character of the Club Willow Wells, or the, sorry, the Willow Wells community overall.
Thank you. I hope that helps give you at least a little bit of insight. Yeah, I see someone else who would like to speak. Yes, if you, if you could just state your name and your municipality of residence, please.
Thank you, Councilor Bonagor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Chris. Seems like you've had some difficult work dealing with all the owners. My name is Deepmark Kubasta. I'm from Waterloo, representing my mother from Blue, thirty Blue Springs Drive. I, I have to also take issue with the fifteen-story block tower. It was something that, I'm not sure it was clarified sufficiently at the time it was presented, at a time when probably a lot of people were on vacation, not getting their mail, not paying attention really. So personally, is there any way to rework some of the factors of the development to bring the height down? Because quite frankly, if you're familiar with the buildings and the character of the neighborhood, the development as it is currently shown really does not fit into that character, particularly from a color scheme perfect, perspective, and from just the overall sightlines and height of the buildings that are to be included. The, the current nine stories which the atrium share where I used to live, it's, it's a completely different character, if you will. So personally, I think if the, the height of the, what is it, the, the two wings?
The podium?
The podium, thank you. If you bring that up by two floors, you can bring the whole thing down to ten stories and, and less, and then you'll have the same number of units. And of course, the other thing that I feel probably could be changed is the colors, like a dark gray, black, death star motif. It does not fit the, the beige sandstone natural colors of the, of the current colors of all the buildings around it. So I also noticed there was some issues with the, the rear setback of the building was not in compliance with, I believe, the, the minimums or maximums. And the number of visitor parking spaces seems oddly low. I can tell you at thirty Blue Springs, there's never any visitor parking available, and they have substantially more than the nine that are currently allocated. And they have substantially fewer number of units in their building. So I'd just like to put that out there. I don't know if there's any way to go back and make some changes to all of this, but thank you very much.
Thank you for, for speaking this evening. I, I don't believe that there is anything within that council can do when it comes to facades. So I don't believe that's under our purview as it is. But John, did you want to speak to anything from that? Or Mr. Pigeon?
Yeah, Chair. So I think it's important that for the residents, that the building that you saw tonight is a concept. It is not the building that's going to be built. So Club Willow Wells is, assuming that the zoning is approved, will then be going to market, and they will be setting through agreement of purchase and sale terms that they will control the architectural design of the building, for example. As far as the, the height goes, and all six of the condominium boards was, were fully aware of the recommendation by Club Willow Wells of the fifteen stories. And their representatives in each of the six condominiums was tasked from August fifteenth to September the sixth to find out what the membership wanted to see. And fifteen was what ultimately was agreed to with all of those provisions in terms of setbacks and whatnot. So the majority ruled according to the, the Board of Directors, and that's how we arrived at it. But the color scheme is, you know, the color scheme is something that'll be dealt with by the Board of Directors in the future, when, when a purchaser is, is known.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilor Vasik, did you have a question?
Through you, Chair Bonagor. This is for staff. I know there was another email that council got asking about keeping the height in the downtown, which made me wonder, as we intensify, what do we as a city consider the downtown?
Pardon me?
Do, yeah, do we have like a definition or a vision of what downtown includes?
Through you, Chair. In terms of, just to clarify the question, asking where does Uptown end and where does the rest of Uptown, I did downtown, uptown, whatever we all branded as such, but, but where does that line start and stop? Is that the question?
Yeah.
Okay. When we look at the, the official plan and the zoning, new zoning framework, for example, there's an uptown zone and an uptown growth area that's being designated by the province and identified as, as the uptown area. The uptown BIA slightly different, but when we look at the, the uptown area, I think generally when we get up towards Laurier, that's where uptown ends. And then beyond that is the rest of the city. So uptown area, that north border, I'd say is about the Laurier area, University Avenue. It's hard to pinpoint exactly where because everyone has their own definition of that, but, but that would kind of be this, so I'd suggest this property is not located within uptown Waterloo.
Then is it, I can't think of the right word, but is it weird or, or out of context, out of character for this then to be a more intense, since it's not in the uptown where, where I think the community has a sort of like perception that intensification should just be within those boundaries?
Through, Madam Chair, that, good question. There's a lot of development encouraged in uptown, and we are seeing a lot of development. But with our growth boundary within the city, we're going to see development throughout. And so the height and, or the nodes and corridors policies that we have have identified certain areas where development will happen. Outside of those nodes and corridors, development will not happen as much. This property is within one of those nodes, and this is identified as an area where further development and, and intensification is encouraged because of that node classification or corridor classification.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Bodley.
Sorry, thank you through you, Chair Bonagor. These questions are making me lead to more questions, I guess. So in terms of trying to understand how the proposal between the, the twelve-story buildings and the fifteen-story building, you know, less or more came about, is it, on these other sites that are around this area that are RMU forty, are they RMU forty with no restrictions?
Through you, Chair, the, the zoning is RMU forty. There's no other site specifics for these properties that exist. There was one from the nineteen nineties, but that one will be repealed when the ballot is repealed. But the, the official plan does designate this whole area as high-density eighty-one meters, identifying that in this general area, there should be some high-density permitted. The zoning itself then scopes it down to, well, what really makes sense on this property in particular? And so that's why the other properties are forty, whereas this one sixty could be very appropriate.
So from, from my perspective, and maybe, maybe this gives some context to some of the commentary from the delegates. And, and I guess I want to say, first off, I mean, it's, it's given the number of owners in this situation, and just in general, even when we're not dealing with owners, it's, it's very hard to make everybody happy. So I appreciate the process and having gone through that with everybody. I think that's extremely valuable. But for me as a councillor, when I'm looking at rezoning this parcel of land for development, given that all the other properties around it are RMU forty, I would have a really hard time saying that in, that an RMU forty designation is out of character for the, for the area. And so if this was rezoned to RMU forty to be in line with everything else, then what would happen is we would get those, we, we could theoretically get the two-tower situation that the, that Chris was talking about earlier, which would have potentially caused shadows into the other properties. Was that, was that part of the, is that sort of how this came about? As opposed to why like a ten or an eight or a nine-story building were, were not considered because this area clearly, based on the zoning designation for the properties around it, does make sense from an RMU forty perspective? Is that fair to say?
Through you, Chair. There's a lot of little details in that and considerations. It comes down to the application that was submitted, being a fifteen-story building we evaluated, is this appropriate and is this not appropriate? And at the end, we concluded that fifteen is appropriate in this location within the policy framework and, and the history of this area. And that's why fifteen was agreed to in the end. If something lower or taller was more appropriate, we would have suggested as such.
I, I think this is a good time for me just to interject because I'm not seeing any further delegations coming forward. And if that's the case, if there are no further delegations, is that I'm not seeing anyone else? Okay, this formal public meeting is concluded, and the application is now open to council for a motion and a debate, which is where I think we're at now. Councilor Freeman?
Through you, Chair Bonagor. I'd like to move a motion, and then I have some commentary which might help clarify some of the conversation.
Seconded by Mayor Tawoski here.
Yeah, I need to read this. Council agrees with planning staff. Having considered all written and oral submissions from the public and stakeholders, and considered the professional opinions of planning staff, council approves zoning by law amendment Z eighteen oh four, forty Blue Springs Drive in accordance with section seven, recommendations of IPPW two thousand and nineteen oh eight for the reasons specified in section six, the conclusions of the report. If there's a second or for that, I'm happy to provide some.
Councilor Hanma.
So I will tell you that if you, if you looked online, you would see that this application was first brought as an informal to council in two thousand and seventeen. And so it has been a two-year process. And when this first came to council, primary concerns were raised with regard to stormwater management, and, and I'm going to say site planning concerns, things like there was two driveways, there was issues with refuse bins and how that would work. There was a shared driveway between the condominium owners on thirty Blue Springs and this new building. And so there was a tremendous amount of concern raised at that time with that preliminary concept design. The Club Willow Wells board, in addition to the meetings that Mr. Pigeon mentioned that happened at Christ Lutheran Church, and I want to say we had about a hundred people come that night. In addition to that meeting, there was, there were other meetings with board members kind of to better understand the, the process and, and, and they were concerned that maybe council was holding up their decision-making because of concerns that were raised. And it wasn't that at all, it's a process, and that staff was in the process with Mr. Pigeon. They'd asked for more reports to be done, and they were coming back. And, and there was a lot of conversation at the church meeting with Christ Lutheran, and, and there were, you know, the big amount of heavy lifting that needed to be done was for the Club Willow Wells to go back to their broader membership, to the, to the condominium holders at all of the various and sundry buildings. This is incredibly, from a, from a condominium legal perspective, there's some lawyer right now doing a little happy dance because they are going to be writing contracts for a while on this one. But, but they, they did. The, the, the Club Willow Wells have gone back. They, they've made it clear more broadly to the members of all of the buildings that tonight's the last meeting. The height has gone up and down. Some people wanted more height, some people wanted less height. And so this notion between the thirteen and the fifteen story was kind of where it, it seemed to be pivoting. And, and I, like, I, I'm not, the RMU forty zoning goes back to the eighties, at a time when we wouldn't have, we would have considered that property highly underdeveloped at that time. I will tell you that when the Fourwell Creek development went through and the buildings that are there right now was highly controversial because there were single residential nearby, and they didn't want to have multi-residential in that area. So, so the fact that there's, there, there was some concern over heights here is, is not unexpected. I, I appreciate all the work that the board has done because I, I know for a fact how much they've done. And one of the balancing points for them too is to come up with a development that would also be attractive to somebody to purchase. They've invested an awful lot of resources into undertaking this process. They're waiting to demolish the structure that's there. And, and not only are they looking for recovery on that, but they're looking for someone who's going to care about building a nice building. And the urban design comments that were raised today in terms of exterior facades and color and all of that kind of thing is important. That's a site plan, part of the site plan process, and it's good that staff has heard that because they'll be able to look at that. And my understanding was from the board that they also want to have some assurances from whoever chooses to buy this property, that they're, they're invested in good urban design as well, that, that the, that the drawings shown are not by any stretch of the imagination, the, the final urban design. In fact, I'm not convinced our staff would be in love with that urban design as it is. I'm, I don't think I am, but. And so, you know, I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that any more time spent banned, you know, going for the height would, would result in a difference because the number of people who have supported this height is tremendous. And I have to just trust in the work that they've done in, in the apartment buildings. So that's my rationale for council's consideration. If you want to see my six pages of notes, they're back in my office.
Yes, Mayor Tawoski.
Thank you. I plan to support this, and I do think we really need, as a council, to thank the, the Board of Directors of all the different condo associations, having served on one. Now, they're reflected, that was nineteen eighty-eight, so it's a few years ago. But that's a very, you know, rewarding position, but a very challenging position. And I'm sure you went through a lot of challenges and had a lot of efforts behind you for volunteer positions. So thank you for all your efforts in making this happen.
Any other comments from council before we call the vote? I shall call the vote. Everyone in favor? That is, that is unanimous. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and good luck with where this project goes. Okay, we are at the tail end now. That's, it's okay, we can, we'll keep going. So any, we have no consideration of notice of motion, given a previous meeting? Notice of motion listed as none, just checking, okay? No communications and correspondence? Regional information and correspondence, none is listed, is that correct? Okay. No unfinished business? Okay. Oh, this may have been why Councilor Freeman was seeking a couple of minutes. Yes, Councilor Vasik. I was going to say, I'm just about to start with new business. Please, go ahead. We have new business from Councilor Vasik.
Thanks, through you, Chair Bonagor. I just think there were like a million great things that happened in the community, and we still have a few minutes, I think, till the game starts. So like, I just wanted to.
We've got an hour, it's fine.
Oh, sorry, I'm not following. Sorry, I jumped on the bandwagon at like fifteen minutes to the end of the last game. It was very exciting. It was very exciting. Okay, so Ward five, what was happening there? There were so many great things. I mean, the Service Centre Open House, the Service Centre's in Ward five, and that thing is amazing, and it was so well-attended, and you like, huge congratulations to staff for all the work that you put into it. It's a favorite event of mine and my family's, and for raising all that money to Ronald McDonald House. The I, because of the neighborhood strategy, the Iowa Courts, the Iowa Court Neighborhood Associate, well, they, they're not in a neighborhood association yet, but they maybe want to do that, and they had their first annual barbecue, and they got three hundred dollars for that from the neighborhood group, and they were really excited. There were, when I left, there were probably about thirty or forty people there, and there were probably more to come. So I'm really excited to see where that goes. And then one of the residents on Sunday, and it wasn't a public thing, but was having an Eid al, il, oh, no, El Fater, yeah, celebration, inviting so many people from the community, like just a wonderful community event. And then yesterday afternoon, there was a celebration at Croydon Street. It's their twenty-fifth barbecue that they put on, official barbecue. They have photos from every year, group photos, and they were also welcoming two longtime residents, their Canadian, they got their Canadian citizenship, and Bardish Chager was there, MP Bardish Chager was there to welcome them. So it was like a hop-in weekend in Ward five, and I think you guys all had stuff, too, so.
We did. I'm going to follow on from that. First of all, I was also very, I went to the Service Centre Open House, so a big thanks to all the staff and all the volunteers. My family has been fortunate enough to actually use Ronald McDonald House in Hamilton, and I will attest to how valuable that service is. It's when your kid is sick in hospital, there is nothing that you want more than to be there with them. But for Ward seven, I do want to update the the Grand Port Party, one of one of my other babies was on on Sunday, and it was a great success. So I'd like to publicly thank the organizing committee that runs it now. I'd also like to thank the Parks, the Parks Department staff who came along to Alexandra Park and made a point of seeking feedback and input on the Alexandra Park redevelopment. And that was great. They were getting a lot of feedback and input from the grown-ups, and the children were drawing their ideal park. So some of my, the the mayor's and my favorite things, like one, a few favorite things that were on the list was requests for a treehouse, for snowflakes to be included somewhere, and a rainbow slide. So I look forward to seeing what comes from all of that input. And as we get close to tip-off, I'd also like to give a big shout-out to the Uptown BIA and the Economic Development staff and everyone else, and the sponsors who have been putting on Game Night in Waterloo Public Square. Friday night was fantastic. I'm told that the rain should hold off for tonight. It's no small feat to bring something like that together at short notice, so I I love seeing the city getting excited, just along with the whole country getting excited to pull off something so engaging. And it was, if you go to the Public Square tonight, you will see the diversity of Waterloo right there in the heart of uptown, and it's a beautiful thing. So go Raptors. Any other new business? Councilor Henry?
Since we're on about the weekend, I thought I'd mention that the newly-formed Sugarbush Park Neighborhood Association held their inaugural Meet the Neighbors barbecue over the weekend on on Saturday. I wasn't able to be there at the peak of their attendance because we had our rescheduled first birthday party for my for my son, so I think they were very understanding. But Finn did join me at the barbecue, so it was his first neighborhood association barbecue that that he's been to. He couldn't eat anything, which is which is fine, but they they had pages of new people sign up to be on the list and and be engaged. So I I'm looking forward to that snowball. That's a very diverse community economically, ethnically, and the rest there, the diversity of Waterloo in many respects as well, and I'm glad to see that they're coming together and had such a good inaugural event, and I was glad I could come out to support them.
Any other, any other new business? You're all racking your brains now, aren't you? No? Okay. So we've got, I think, any other business? I think that's what we're up to now. I think we're at the end, people. We've we've made it. So motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Yes, yes, everyone agreed? We are... Oh, sorry. It was, it was, it was Councilor Bodley and Councilor Vasik, the the hands I saw go, well, okay. All in favor. Done. Thank you.